Welcome to the May 15, 2018 Yukon City Council and Yukon Municipal Authority Meetings in the Council Chambers of the Centennial Building at 12 South Fifth Street, Yukon, Oklahoma at 7:00 PM. This evening, our invocation will be given by Pastor Ray Rotan of the Bethel Community Church. And following that, we will have the flag salute. So Pastor Rotan.
Let's pray. Dear God, thank you so much for this wonderful city, this beautiful place that we can live and serve. What I pray tonight, that your hand would be on the meeting, that you'd be over the different conversations, the different business that needs to be handled for the city of Yukon. I thank you so much for a place that we can raise our kids and grandkids and see your hand on our city. Just be with us tonight. May your sovereign hand guide us and direct us, and that all the conversations that we have be seasoned with salt. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Pastor Rotan. Pro-call please.
McCarron?
Here.
Smystrela?
Here.
Yanda?
Here.
Kachini?
Here.
Selby?
Here.
We'll now open a public hearing to receive input from the public regarding the 2018-2019 City of Yukon Budget. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on the budget? Seeing none, we will now close the meeting on the budget and open a public hearing to receive input from the public regarding the submission of a grant request to the Oklahoma Tourism and Recreation Department under the Land and Water Conservation Fund for a construction of a splash pad at Kimball Park.
Mr. Mayor, we are sending around a sign-in sheet. We'd like everybody to sign that. That does help us with this application. So if everybody would please sign.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much. Okay. Are there any other public comments on the splash pad? Seeing none, we will now close the public meeting on the input on the grant request for a new splash pad. And we will move on to presentations and proclamations. Mr. Shiver?
None today, Mr. Mayor.
We have none. Thank you. Visitors, this section of the proceedings is for our visitors who would like to address the Yukon City Council on a non-agenda item. Do we have anyone here this evening who wishes to speak and address the council on a non-agenda item? Mr. Marvin Smith, we'd like for you to come over here, sir, and give us your name and address and proceed.
I'm Marvin Smith, 1817 Southwest 27th in El Reno. I spent 42 years, 43 years in Yukon, so I've known most of you quite well. Years ago, Mike and I used to play softball against each other on our teams, so we go way back. I'm here tonight to discuss a community and county project, and that's the Save the Pool at Redlands College. The Oklahoma Public Funds are not available to keep the pool open. They had to make cuts, so they cut, they're starting to cut back and reduce things on their budget. Obviously, they want to use the money that they have in the classrooms to give the best education they can. So they have to start somewhere. I have been working with them for about a month. I think that we can privatize it, different ways that that can be done. And no, I'm not going to ask for any money tonight, but as we move forward, because there's a meeting Thursday night at the Redlands College in the Regent's Wardroom, and that will be further discussed. I've made several proposals to the board members and to the faculty at Redlands, and it will be, if we have to close that down, if it's closed down, the only pool in North Pool in Canadian County will be the three-lane pool at Gold's Gym. I'm not trying to take anything away from Gold's Gym, but three-lane pool won't help Canadian County. I have papers that all of you have in front of you. I have some stacked back here, some priorities that we have. First of all, we've got to hire more lifeguards. You've got to have money to hire lifeguards. They get $10 an hour now. We think we need to go to 12 and 1/2 at least. You have to get them there to keep them there. If you don't have the lifeguards, they can't open that pool. Then we have lifeguard training, and then we start having activities. Some of the activities that I think that we can do is we can have races among the elementary students in particular, from across the county, from different schools coming on Saturday. We can have things on every Friday night of the month. Youth church groups come in, have fellowship, leadership, with no cell phones in there. What are you laughing at, Mayor? That's what they do, but they laugh at when I say no cell phones. Well, they didn't come there for that. They come there for fellowship and leadership, you know, and bring in motivational speakers. Maybe the next Friday night, they bring in mid-high students from across the county. I think there's a lot of things that can be done, but they have to market it, and they haven't done that. They know that. We can market it, and we can make it work. As most of you know, I've been successful as a volunteer in this community for many, many years, and I go with the theory, if you fail a plan, you plan to fail. That's not me. I don't plan on failing. But I'm going to need everybody in the county's help, and we're not asking for money from any city, because it's a public funds thing. It needs to be privatized, and we have several ways that we think we can do that. You know, I'm a male within with the...
You're encouraging people then to contact you?
Right.
Slash your hand over the school for such time?
Right. Again, if they didn't get a copy of this, oh, I'm sorry, there's some back there. You know, I'll give you my number, whatever, you know, but...
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
We appreciate your time.
It's good to be home.
Just for the record, he beat me most of the time. Are there any other visitors this evening on a non-agenda item? Okay? Thank you. We will now recess as the Yukon City Council and reconvene as the Yukon Municipal Authority. Item 1A on the agenda is the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can approve of those routine items they wish to be approved in one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all the authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve: A) the minutes of the regular meeting of May the 1st, 2018; B) the payment of material claims in the amount of $762,197.10. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Seeing none, vote please.
Selby?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes. Item 2A, consider and approve Resolution Number YMA 2018-01, a resolution authorizing the issuance of municipal bond authority. And beyond that, I will have Mr. John Michael Williams step forward and read the particulars.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and this is not the ordinance that we read in whole, in full, but this is a resolution of the authority that authorizes a loan to be taken from RCB Bank in an amount not to exceed $900,000. And this was a competitive process by which RCB was chosen, and this is for a fire truck and for sanitation vehicles. And should you wish to authorize this loan, the motion would be to approve the resolution.
Thank you, sir. I'll finish reading the back part of this as well, right here. Yeah. No, I'll go ahead and finish that.
Oh, the entire, entire doc?
This.
You're talking about the agenda item?
Yes, the item has to be...
Okay. Let me read the agenda item. That's what you asked me to do.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Consider and approve Resolution Number 801801, a resolution authorizing the issuance of the Yukon Municipal Authority 2018 revenue note, the revenue note, in an aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $900,000, waiving competitive vetting, authorizing said note to be sold at a price less than par by negotiated sale within the limits provided by Title 60 Oklahoma Statute, Section 176, authorizing and approving documents, procedures, and payments related to issuance of the revenue note. Designating the revenue note as a qualified tax-exempt obligation, as contained in the Internal Revenue Code of 1986, providing that the trust indenture shall be subject to provisions of the revenue note ratifying a lease agreement and operations and maintenance contract between the City of Yukon and the Yukon Municipal Authority, and agreeing that the term of the lease shall extend so long as the revenue note remains outstanding and unpaid.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion second, is there any further discussion? Okay. Seeing none, vote please.
Smystrela?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Kachini?
Here.
Selby?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
We will now adjourn as the YMA and reconvene as the Yukon City Council. Item 1 is the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve: A) the minutes of the regular meeting of May the 1st, 2018; B) payment of material claims in the amount of $566,515.55. Item C, designating the items on the attached list from the Technology Department as surplus and authorizing their sale, donation, or trade. D, the renewal of the existing radio system license agreement with the Oklahoma City upon concurrence to June 30, 2019. And E, setting the date for the next regular council meeting for June the 5th, 7:00 PM in the council chambers of the Centennial Building, 12 South Fifth Street, Yukon, Oklahoma. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes. Item 2 is reports of boards, commissions, and city officials. Mr. Crosby, Crosby, do we have anything to report?
No report to say, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Item 3, consider approving the following recommendations from the Traffic Commission: A) obtaining counts of turning movements for a continuous 12-hour period beginning on a weekday at 6:00 AM at the intersection of Landmark and Yukon Parkway to include all traffic turning from Landmark onto Yukon Parkway and all traffic turning from Yukon Parkway onto Landmark, and also including the delay times for traffic turning left from or onto Landmark prior to the end of the current school year. Using lane striping to mark an eastbound right-turn-only lane, an eastbound left-turn-only lane, and a westbound lane on Landmark at the intersection with Yukon Parkway with lane widths of approximately 11 feet, with the length of the turn lane to be determined by the count of the turning movements. And C, installing signage to restrict left turns from Landmark onto the driveway of the proposed daycare facility during the hours of 6:00 AM and 4 to 6:00 PM on weekdays. Do I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion. Second.
Okay. I have a motion and second. The item is now open for discussion. Mr. Montgomery is here from the Traffic Commission. This has been a previously discussed item where we've had quite a bit of discussion regarding the traffic and everything else in regard to the implementation of a daycare center. So, Mr. Montgomery, would you give us your thoughts and where you think this is, what it's going to do for us?
Well, my thoughts on this right now, until I see, as I told in the commission meeting, until I see some turning count movements, it's going to be, will help me determine what length of left turn, but I'm going to need on Landmark for the people to get onto Yukon Parkway going southbound. And also, the proprietors of the daycare center that are looking at to start there, they have mentioned that they would, the traffic would be coming in there pretty much starting around 6:00 AM, and somewhere pick around between 7:00, 7:30, somewhere in that timeframe. And then, there'll be a slack time, and then again, in the afternoon, they'll pick up again for parents to come pick up their kids. The other issue with this is, on Landmark, particularly during the morning hours, there's a traffic that is trying to get onto Yukon Parkway, especially to go southbound. It's a mixture of normal vehicles and also school buses. This street is also part of being used for people to be able to access Yukon Parkway in order to go back south instead of trying to go up to where they may on Main Street, where now it's blocked or cut off with a median barrier there, as we would call it. Probably in the future on this, there's some discussion about maybe a signal in the future, but until that time, we'll have to wait and see at that point on this.
Okay, so these are just recommendations at this point now that you're asking for approval from us?
Yes, sir.
And that those results will be posted when? I mean, when...
As soon as we can get the counts going on this.
Okay.
Like I said, I have requested this to be done before the school year is out. That way, we have the school volume in there as well.
Is there any sense of how many school buses there is there now?
Not right now, sir.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
So you're going to take all this information, the study that's done, and then determine what exactly will be done?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. No, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here in the audience that wishes to speak on this item at this Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I have talked to our engineer concerning this recommendation, and I believe that we are prepared to get that study done very quickly before the end of school. Is that correct?
That's correct. We will have traffic engineering consultants. They will assist us in getting the counts.
Oh, as well? Okay. Who is that, Robbie? Might just...
Traffic engineering consultants?
Yes.
They will work through Triad, but they are the on-call traffic engineers for the City of Yukon.
For the City of Yukon.
And then, once that's complete, you'll come back to us with the recommendations?
Yes, I will get with TEC, and we will get with Mr. Montgomery, and we'll come, we'll be able to come back with the recommendation.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Okay. Item 4, consider approving Resolution 2018-07, a resolution of the Yukon City Council establishing the 911 emergency telephone service fee for the calendar year of 2019 with the association of central governments, ACOG. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes. Item 5, consider approving Resolution 2018-08, a resolution of the City of Yukon requesting the Oklahoma Department of Tourism and Recreation, consider the proposed Kimball Park Splash Pad project for approval in the 2018 Land and Water Conservation Fund grant, and submit same for National Park Service funding in the amount of $110,000 with matching funds of $110,000. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay. Vote please.
Kachini?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Item 6, consider approving the 2018 update to the City of Yukon Emergency Operations Plan as recommended by the Emergency Management Director. Do I have a motion, please?
Make a motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this? Just one question, I guess. The Emergency Management Director, we have a motionary, this is, we're just updating our old plan, is that correct? There's just, there's not anything significantly different at this point, is that correct?
That's correct. Just getting the correct names and things that have been changed, so everybody will know what to do and when to report should an emergency arrive.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any other discussion? Vote please.
Selby?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Item 7, consider approving Ordinance 1358, an ordinance providing for the amendment to the Code of Ordinances for the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, providing for the disposition of drilling mud and other drilling fluids, providing for violations of said ordinance and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
Yes, I do. I don't know who would answer the questions. Does, this does exclude saltwater disposal?
Saltwater disposal would be excluded. It's in the exclusive jurisdiction of the Corporation Commission. As you may recall, they've been regulating how much each disposal well can take, trying to reduce the number of earthquakes. So they have complete control of saltwater disposal.
Okay, so this, is that the completion of the well?
This is in the drilling operation.
Okay.
Where they use the drilling mud as part of the drilling operation.
Okay, I also have a, did you have any more?
No.
Okay. I also have a request here for Ms. Jody Pendleton. Ms. Pendleton, would you come up and speak on the issue, please?
Yes. I'm just here to garner support for this ordinance, because we have been affected by the soil farming on our farm out north of Yukon, within the city limits, and this has created a huge nuisance to our farm. The odor, the spraying, the OCC issues these permits, and they do not come inspect these sites as required by law until we had called and called to get them out there. And when they did come out there, they found numerous violations. They had sprayed up within 50 feet of our actual water well that we use for our drinking water. They had sprayed over the fence line onto our property, and they had sprayed it very thickly on a grade that was much steeper than 8% as allowed by law. They required them to fix these things, which they did not. After more calls and more calls, it's taken months for them to even try to fix it. It's never going to be fixed completely, because it's already down. It's dangerous for health reasons, the odor, which I know there is no ordinance against odor, but it was terrible. I mean, it was burning our throats, burning our eyes, and then our water. I'm concerned about it contaminating our water well, and it has happened. I've known several people that it has happened to out west, and so I just feel like, within the city limits, it's crazy that they allow this. And then, also, you asked about the saltwater. The way the ordinance reads, it says that nothing can be pumped down the wellbore or down the annulus of a well nor spread upon the surface of the ground. So that doesn't cover wastewater injection well, saltwater injection well, or...
We can enforce that when you talk about saltwater disposal, simply because the Corporation Commission has jurisdiction over saltwater disposal. Okay. So what this is saying is they can't, they can't pump drilling mud and those type things down the wellbore. But saltwater disposal, we can't do anything with it. It's strictly the Corporation Commission.
Okay. When I had talked to Mike Moore, they're over soil farming as well, as far as issuing permits and things like that. And he had said very specifically, if you just had a city ordinance, I could have not issued this permit. So I was wondering if maybe that would fall into the same category? You know, if we went ahead and talked about issuing a city ordinance for the saltwater disposal and injection wells, that maybe it would give us some leeway if we needed it within the city.
If the Corporation Commission will grant us jurisdiction, I'll be glad to draft it.
Okay. All right. Does anyone have any questions?
Who are you speaking to at the Corporation Commission, by the way?
Mike Moore.
Mike Moore?
Mm-hmm.
And he was the one that sent the email on the violations.
This is from him. He's the hydrologist for the, oversees the permits for the soil farming. And the saltwater is included. They can spray saltwater, and they can spray the oil-based mud. They can only do it every three years. This is the second time it's been done out there, next door to us. And this time, I think the company they used maybe wasn't as reputable as the first company, because they sprayed it on too thick. They were in huge violations. Like I said, they just sprayed it everywhere, over our fence line.
Was anything done about the violations that you're aware of?
Well, they were issued this letter right here that they were to clean the mud. They came back out after we called after a month or so. They hadn't done anything. So I think they might, they had came out there, and they minimally complied. I think, once it was down, and he point-blank said this, what do you want, what are you going to do? You can't suck it back up once it's down. I mean, it's sprayed with a big spreader. They couldn't come over and shovel it off of our, you know, property line. They asked them to plow it in. By law, it's supposed to be plowed in several inches. They didn't do that.
Do you know if that is a certified dump?
As far as I, no, it is not.
So, attorney, then, we would have some...
We would have some jurisdiction there.
If it's not a certified dump.
Correct.
I think they just contract with the oil companies, and they get paid thousands of dollars to just let them come dump that mud.
Well, what the point is, is that the ordinance is directed towards a certified dump. In other words, the people who own that property would actually have to go to the state and get a certification, if I believe I understand that. And so therefore, if they're dumping, and it's not a certified dump, then there would at least be some recourse through the ordinance.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And the transportation to that certified dump has to be by a certified bonded transportation company.
Right. And I suspect that that's not being done either. That's one of the discussions that we had when we were preparing the ordinance.
Okay, does the permit by the SCC declare it a certified dump?
Well, I would not say in that particular case are. In other words, we're saying it has to be in the City of Yukon. It has to be a certified hauler, and it has to be under that. So, okay, thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And glad you took the time to come and speak to us. Are there's any further discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Yanda?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes. And just as a side note, if there's something that we may contact the Corporation Commission and ask them exactly how that fits.
I'm inclined to do that.
Would you do that, please, sir? Thank you. Item 7A is approval of emergency clause of Ordinance 1358. Do I have a motion, please?
Make a motion. Second.
Motion and a second. Any other further discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Yes.
Item eight, consider and approve Resolution 2018-09, a resolution approving the incurrence of indebtedness by the Yukon Municipal Authority, known as the Authority, issuing its 2018 Revenue Note in aggregate principal amount not to exceed $900,000, waiving the competitive bidding and authorizing said note to be sold at a price less than par value, negotiated sale within the limits provided by Title 60 of the Oklahoma Statutes, Section 176, authorizing and approving a sales tax agreement and providing security for the note, designating the revenue note as qualified tax-exempt obligations, as contained in the Internal Revenue Code of 1986, providing that the trust indenture shall be subjected to the provisions of the revenue note, ratification of lease agreement and operation and maintenance contract between the city and the authority, and agreeing that that item, and that the term, excuse me, of the lease shall extend so long as the revenue note remains unpaid and the authorization documents and procedures related to the issuance of the revenue note. Mr. Williams?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is the city's approval of the approval that the Authority granted a few minutes ago for the same $900,000 note.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any other further discussion? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Williams, and vote please.
Yanda?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Caccini?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Okay, do we now have to read the note in its full entirety?
Yes, number nine, we do.
Okay. All right, I will, let's, I'll read the first item and then let you read the second part, I guess. Item nine, consider and approve Ordinance of 1360, an ordinance amending Section 2-137B of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Yukon by determining that certain obligations, including the Yukon Municipal Authority 2018 Revenue Note in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $900,000, do not exceed debt limitations, repealing all conflicting ordinance provisions, and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion, please?
And we typically read this.
Do you want to read it?
This is, this is the one we read.
Okay, so do you want to read it now, or do you need a motion first?
It's your choice, Mayor.
Attorney? Done.
You can go ahead, and if you'd like to proceed, then Mr. Williams can read it.
All right, yes, sir. Will you go ahead and read that first, and then we'll?
Yes, be it ordained by the Council of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, Section 1. The Code of Ordinances of the City of Yukon is hereby amended by amending the existing language of Section 2-137B, which new Section 2-137B is set out in its entirety below, to wit, Item B, the following bonds and indebtednesses are conclusively determined to be within and not to exceed the limitations of Section 2-137A, or any debt limitations of the Code of Ordinances or the Charter of the City, and any conflicting provisions of the Code of Ordinances of the City are modified to the extent necessary to fully validate the following. Number one, Yukon Municipal Authority Sales Tax Utility System Revenue and Refunding Bonds, Series 2012, in the aggregate principal amount of $6,500,000. Number two, Yukon Municipal Authority Sales Tax and Utility System Revenue and Refunding Bonds, Series 2013, in the aggregate principal amount of $8,500,000. Number three, Yukon Municipal Authority Sales Tax Revenue Notes, Series 2015A, in the aggregate principal amount of $9,500,200. Item, now, item four, Yukon Municipal Authority Sales Tax Revenue Notes, Series 2015B, in the aggregate principal amount of $5,805,000. Item five, Yukon Municipal Authority 2017 Revenue Note, in the aggregate principal amount of $380,000. Item six, Yukon Municipal Authority Sales Tax Revenue Notes, Series 2017, in the aggregate principal amount of $10 million. Item seven, Yukon Municipal Authority Sales Tax Revenue Notes, Series 2017B, in the aggregate principal amount of $5,840,000. Item eight, which is the item that you're actually considering approving tonight, is Yukon Municipal Authority 2018 Revenue Note in the aggregate principal amount of $900,000. And there are two other sections repealer, all provisions of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Yukon, which are inconsistent with the foregoing and hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict, it being intended that the foregoing ordinance shall supersede and modify any conflicting provisions contained in the Code of Ordinances of the City of Yukon, and Section 3, emergency where it is necessary for the need of preservation of peace, health, and safety of the citizens and residents of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, that the foregoing ordinance be enacted, and that the provisions, provisions of this ordinance become effective immediately, and emergency is hereby declared to exist, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect immediately from and after its passage, and approval as provided by law.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Vote please.
Caccini?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Item 9A, consider and approve the emergency clause of Ordinance Number 1360. Do I have a motion, please?
Make a motion.
I'm sorry.
I make a motion.
Okay. Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Vote please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Caccini?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Okay. Item 10 is new business. Do we have any new business before the council?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Item 11, council discussion, councilwoman, Yanda?
Nothing further this evening, thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman, Smystrela?
I just want to remind people that before long, school is going to be out, and there'll be a lot of little kids running around, and please be careful. Sometimes, I think that we need to change our 35 miles an hour to 10, but we can't do that tonight. Anyway, people drive so fast, but please, everybody, take care and pay attention for those little kids that might just run out and say hi, you know, whatever. Thank you, that's all I have to say.
Councilman, Caccini?
Just want to remind everybody that the Veterans Museum is going to have a garage sale this weekend, so please come on out and help us out. Thank you.
Councilwoman, Selby?
Want to thank you all for coming tonight. I'm sad school's out. I miss our teenagers for Mr. A's class being here. Have a great tomorrow, and be sure and be kind to one another.
And for me this evening, just letting everyone know, there will be a special meeting on May the 17th, 2018, where we will approve or disapprove of the Samaritan Contract, and hopefully take care of that business in a special meeting on May the 17th, 2018, and that contract, that will, there will only be one item on the agenda, and that will be the Samaritan Contract. And seeing no other business, want everybody to have a great week, and this meeting's adjourned.